Well, it's not seven.
Okay.
Is it seven?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank y'all for being here. Good evening to everybody. Let it see today. It is 7:01, March 10, 2022. I'd like to call the Library Board Meeting to Order. Roll call. I believe we have more than quorum tonight. Ms. Gracie? Yeah.
Jessie?
Yes, ma'am. Here.
Morgan?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Gracie, here. Thank you, ma'am. We have quorum tonight. We are moving to citizen comments. So at this time, we'll open it up for citizen comments. Anybody like to jump in? Okay. All right. I guess we'll close citizen comments. And then next one, we have approval of the minutes from February. So y'all get a chance to look over that.
You did not?
I did. I have them right in front of me.
I thought it was pretty accurate.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from February.
Second.
Perfect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. So our next one is new business. Okay, so we have our thank you, sir. Our presentation, so the item number one under new business is the presentation by the Kyle Buda Kwanis Club, Dr. Vanessa Westbrook.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Vanessa Westbrook, and I am the treasurer for the Kyle Buda Kwanis Club. And at this time, I'd like to take the opportunity to present the library staff with a commemorative, I guess it's a plaque, that we have been giving out. We have a limited number of them. And during Black History Month, we had a delightful event over at the Crook Center on MLK Day. And at that particular time, we had several groups that joined together to create a wonderful celebration from MLK holiday. And one of those things was, we actually set up a mini theater in the building so that as citizens came in to enjoy cake and punch for Martin Luther King's Day, we had a book display, but we also had a little mini theater setup where you could look at a little 15-minute film about the MLK assassination. And that particular piece was done delightfully by the library. And with that in mind, I would like to give the staff this little plaque. And the interesting thing about this plaque is we only have 25 of them. And there are 25 of them because in it is the new quarter for Maya Angelou. And when the children came in to select a book of their choice, and someone walked away with like a bookload of books, they each received this quarter, the new quarter with Maya Angelou's figure on it. And they were told, now don't spend this. So it was given to them in a cute little bag with a little quote from Maya Angelou. And Paul, if you could come up and stand by me.
You bet.
So that we could, you could receive this. I appreciate it. And we just so love having the opportunity to partner with the museum and look for many, many more opportunities as it arises. And he has my camera to take the pictures.
Okay. You're here. Thank you so much for that. That is wonderful.
We are actually meeting in the other room right now with members. So I dashed over real fast. I did my treasures report real quickly so that I could come over and give this out to you. And again, we look forward to more opportunities to be able to engage with the city of Kyle and the library in doing various things, including the big literacy for kids because we do plan on being in the school district now and in the future. So thank you all so much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Congratulations. So we'll go ahead and move to item number two, which is the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association Achievement and Excellence Award for 2021. Paul, you want to kind of hit the highlights of what happened?
So we received this. This is the sixth year that we've received it. Out of, I'm looking at the letter here, I think about 59 libraries in the state qualified for. And we're very, I'm very proud of the staff. And to give you some sense, some of the areas, and we talk about our long-range plan. It's just really best practices. And a lot of libraries, one of the reasons they don't get this is because they don't have the staffing or whatever to do that. Things like services to underserved populations, having a robust marketing plan, cultural, topical, and educational programming, supporting workforce development, digital inclusion, as well as other areas as well. So the application, this is the application. So it, you know, it's a thing that we put together, and it's really kind of neat, too, because we keep these. It's like a real historical document of the whole year. It's really an amazing thing to happen. So, so just to let the board know, I'm extraordinarily proud of the staff to do that for the sixth year. And that's about all I got on that.
Director, you're feeling, in the light of the pandemic and the challenges that I think we all have in our own communities, that you managed, you and your staff managed to still accomplish this is amazing. And I think we should all recognize the extraordinary flexibility that you and your staff showed to still get this done in the midst of the pandemic. So job well done.
Agreed.
Thank you. Members right back there. They worked extraordinarily hard on this.
Thank you. Thank y'all. So we'll move to item number three. Number three, approve the 2022 to 2026 Kyle Public Library Long Range Plan. Y'all should have this in your folder. This is the first page. So is that something you want to start, like go ahead and vote on right now to approve? Or, okay.
And it is actually on the library, on the meeting, library meeting, if you just want to scroll and look at it. Okay.
Yeah, so as a board, I want to go ahead and make a motion to approve the long-range plan. I hope y'all had time to look at it.
Second.
All in favor? I did. Sorry. Sorry, Gracie. Henry, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Congrats. I know y'all put a lot of hard work into that. Thank y'all.
Yeah, I'm really happy with the direction that Director Phelan's laid out. As a community representative, when I moved to Kyle, I wanted us to be a 21st century community to reflect Kyle, not just being from Kyle, but also growing old and aging in college. I'm more convinced than ever that that this library is something we're going to be proud of for at least the next five years. So. I'm very excited about the LRP we put together.
Great job. Let's move to the number four, if that's okay with y'all. Library Directors Report. You want to take it away, Paul?
You bet. And I just did want to say something about the long-range plan. I know we just, of course Dex has been watching this, excuse me, Councilperson Allison. But, you know, we have, these folks have been working on this plan for a long time. So the reason they can approve this is because every section of this and everything we've done, we've done it bit by bit. I think if you look at the survey, we had about 728 responses. All of that information is included in there, as well as the appendix with the written stuff and just warts and all. We put it in the appendix. And so they have worked extraordinarily hard on this, and I'm very proud of the work they did. I think that it's going to be an excellent plan. It's going to move this, this, this library forward in just a multitude of ways. And so, and I think it's something that we can hit the ground running with tomorrow. So, you know, I'm extraordinarily proud of it. So thank you all. And I mean, I really mean that. This, this was a lot of work. So it just, you know, it was down to pass it, you know, immediately, but it was a ton.
The dry erase boards, the dry erase board sessions alone burnt up a lot of dry erase markers.
Okay, so just very briefly, because I know that the council and the board would like to have some discussions. So, but just to give you all, I do have the statistical report for January. We did submit our annual report about two weeks ago. Things are going to be great. Our accreditation is wonderful. So all that's submitted and in. I think if you look at the statistics, you'll see total circulations are up by about 92%. Now, if you'll look at this, you'll see pandemic numbers on these left sides in many cases because you'll see, you know, obviously there were times that we weren't doing programming and so forth like that. But we're coming back strong. Of course, we checked out books through the whole pandemic. But, you know, obviously, a lot of people weren't out. But you can see we're up to about 52,000 checkouts. You know, 121 children, 121 programs for children, 2,265 attendance, 80 young adult programs, 719 attendance, 103 adult programs, and 394 attendance on that. Also, our internet use is rebounding. Patrons is about double what it was. So the good news of this is just that we're coming back, and we're coming back strong. But I do think that there's one thing to look at that is more significant, and that's the digital circulations. And part of that was the investment that the council made in a couple of different things. Number one was LinkedIn, and number one last year was Hoopla. And this is definitely a trend. This is what our citizens want. They want more e-content and more things like that. It also makes it more available for the whole city. So if you look at that number, and our number, that was really the only number that didn't go down during the pandemic. It continued to go up. But, you know, we're at about 12%, but that number is now just exponentially going up. So the board will see this over the next few months. It will be interesting to see where, where that lands at the end of this year. But we're, we're doing a far greater amount now that Hoopla's kicking in, LinkedIn, we're marketing it better and different things like that. So I think that's the takeaway from that. Just if you'll take a look at the March newsletter, of course, we have the St. Patrick's Day porch party. So everybody is an Irishman on St. Patrick's Day. If you want to come by and bring your family. Of course, it's Women's History Month. And you could just see a lot of the different programs we've got going on now with the Hobby Time on Mondays, Kyle Chess Federation. I'd really like to see that. Tomorrow, we have that Phantom of the Opera that we do with CAS. That'll be here at 4:00 PM, and everybody's welcome to come to that. And just a lot of other programs that the staff has been putting together and ramping back up again. So I'm very pleased about those offerings. And then I would like to introduce Michael, because we did bring another service online for the very first time in Kyle. Michael Kaufman Lynch, and maybe you can, our new adult services librarian, maybe you could tell us about that.
So just starting Monday, we opened up our information desk. It's right in the middle of the library proper inside. It's got a big sign up there. And really what it is, it's me sitting at the desk, helping people with finding books, doing research, computer help. We recently figured out how to do the Uber and the Kyle 314, that app. So if anybody comes by who needs that service, send it to me, and right in the middle of the library, we can help them out. And really, it's just being more customer service forward and having more expertise help since now I'm a librarian now. So I know this stuff, and I can help people do whatever they need to do.
Congrats.
And, and finally, on this Library Directors Report, we're just really excited to have, you know, they're exhausting a lot of times for librarians, some reading programs, because you've got so many kids in here. And, you know, we had the medieval fairs, and it's 105 degrees, but they're really a lot of fun, too. And you miss them when you don't have them. So fortunately, this year, we are looking forward to a robust and fun summer reading program again for the first time. And Kara, and you do have a flyer that kind of just hits the high points, and Kara's going to talk about that for just a moment, if you'd like to.
Well, our theme this year is time travel. So travel through time and space to a faraway place, to the library. And so you can see we have quite a lineup. We're very excited because we're actually doing in-person programs. And so we're planning a time portal that people can walk through. So I hope y'all can join us this summer because it's for everybody, and parents and adults can set the tone for reading by joining themselves.
Yes.
Thank you.
You don't even have to have children.
Yeah.
Children not required.
And I do apologize, that's Kara Waits, our Assistant Director here. So I just, I know all of you know Kara, but I should have said this. And that's the Library Directors.
Thank you so much. We'll move to number five, the Friends of the Kyle Public Library Report.
Okay, so we don't have a specific report from them other than one thing. And this is just, again, you know, the, we must be living right because the friends are flush with money right now. And of course, we just got our long-range plan done. And of course, what's the biggest impediment to getting things done, as we always know in the city, is a lack of resources. So one of the very cool things is, starting tomorrow, now that we've got this passed, we can look at that, and we can start, you know, formulating those things. And, and they've already said that, you know, that we're looking at some fairly significant buys. So some of these things we're looking to do. And there's no reason why we can't get started. And I know we don't have the whole year, but I bet you we can work out something for the remainder of this year and make some things happen. So it's very exciting. And they're, and they're, and they keep bugging me, too. If I, they're saying, Paul, you need to ask us for this. You need to ask us. So we will do.
Come with some ideas. We need to bring some.
There you go. Let's do it. Let's do it.
Thank you for that. And then we'll move to number six. So the Council and Kyle Public Library Advisory Board Joint Meeting Item Regarding Roles, or Roles, Goals, and Vision for 2022. So if y'all want to take this packet out, this is the full packet that Paul printed out for everyone. That starts the Long Range Plan. A couple of things that I personally wanted to point out, just.
I need to start reading as well.
Go ahead.
The time is 7:18. We'll now call this Joint Council Speaker, Kyle Public Library Board Meeting to Order. Jeffrey, would you call it?
Michelle?
President?
Allison?
President.
Lawrence Hill?
Rachel?
Percy?
Preston?
W.
Here.
Having four members present, we have a quorum. At this time, we'll open up citizens' comments. Any citizens wishing to speak could come forward now. Seeing none, we'll now close citizens' comment, and we'll get started with the meeting. So first, we're going to start off with council vision topics. The first item on there is art festival. If any councilors would like to start and talk about that.
Can we get a?
I'm going to send it to you right now.
Yeah, just feels good.
There's already something that has been, is that?
It's something we discussed during the vision.
Oh, okay.
So it's goals that we set for the vision.
Okay.
And we're now coming here and sharing our goals with library boards.
Yeah, and maybe I can just, you know, so I think there's a program in the library board. I think y'all definitely want to go through the plan. That's bulleted, so you don't have to follow exactly. If Madam Chair wants to run you all through it. But then we'll have some items like the arts program as the library's over the arts program. We'll talk that through as well. So it's really up to which item you all want to go through first.
Do you want to do the art festival? Yep. You probably can take the most. Okay.
There's a couple of things I just wanted to point out. Just, I know y'all are just seeing this for the first time. So we've been working on this basically like almost the last year. But if you, I think we did have specifically in the arts, if you look at page 15 is the goals and objectives. And the page number's on the bottom right, if you're looking at that. And our goal, number one, I'll read it out to you. The library will encourage the arts by honoring diverse cultures. And then you can see the three bullet points following. So really, I mean, and we want to help, I mean, we want to be a support to what y'all, what the vision is for this. So what is, what would y'all like, I guess, support-wise? Is there a clear direction?
I know I was very excited, and I, I was thinking having, you know, an art festival, even having displays at the park, maybe engaging the local schools. It's some, it was just an idea. I don't know the possibility of that. But I think being inclusive, having different festivals with different cultures, maybe, you know, books for the month, depending on the culture that we were celebrating. It's something I would really like to encourage. I think it will be great to engage the community if we're having something, I won't say every month, but, you know, I, I don't know how that can be planned, but I would, I would be much in support of having different, I just lost the word again, festivals with, you know, that kind of celebrate diversity in the cultures that we have in Kyle, which is, is pretty white.
I guess that leads up to something that I've always been real passionate about, and that's the history of Kyle. Sometimes some of that history's forgotten, so being able to bring that forward and celebrating, you know, one of the things that just happened in the last month is we found an old well that was dug in the 1800s for the original stagecoach line that ran, serviced here at Kyle. So the soldiers would come by and water the horses, and the stagecoaches would stop here in Kyle. And, you know, just, that's a part of history that people forget. People think that Kyle started with a train. And, you know, the city of Kyle started with a train, and lots of things, but the residents were already here, and there was already a history being made here in this area. So making sure we go back and, and, you know, honor that history as well, probably important for me. But really, it's, it's bringing local artists together and bringing the community together. It's kind of what I love to see.
One of my things is, is music. Okay. Incorporating an idea of different types of music with the different cultures that we have in our city, including arts, including paintings, drawings, holograms, or something of that nature. Also, just having local artists that want to come out and show their artwork. And maybe teach a class or something, or have a demonstration of the different types of colors you would use for canvases and drawings and things like that. And then include some students. Because we, we recently took a trip to Prisco and saw some of the art displays that they had, and just seeing these paintings that were just magical. And then when you look down and you drew it, it looks like a 12-year-old Jew tie. And he was doing the whole scenery of a sunset. And then there was another one there that had one with outer space and used different types of design colors and stuff, which was really, really neat. So just something like that. And then, of course, adding some kind of music component to exactly, to it as well as is bringing the different types of cultures and stuff like that. And just having a music fair or something.
Now, jumping in.
Right now, there is, the school district has their art exhibit. And I know, I don't know how it's divided, but Buda, the old Buda School has the exhibit right now. And it may be that today might have been the last day, but they always do that in the spring. All the schools would declare their artworks selected. I think it would be a great idea if it could be a joint.
That would be fantastic.
Even if the city could have like a contest, it would be great though, because they're already selected from their schools and take them to the art exhibit. And I know it's at every level, so that's a possibility. That is out there already. It could be partnered.
I like that idea. And one reason why is that I've been visiting, you know, my kids' schools lately. Some of the artwork, there was an exhibit on ice cream, and every kid there drew an ice cream, a different type of ice cream from the La La Pop shop. And to see that work, I actually started sending pictures to the owner and telling him, look what's here at Wallace Mills. It was pretty awesome. And, but, you know, just a few people get to observe that, you know, to be able to display it publicly so that all citizens could enjoy what artworks coming out of our schools would probably be a benefit for the kids and, you know, for the public as well, you know, to see where our kids are going, you know, where their minds are expanding and what's important to them in the area. Right there, it told me, okay, we got to do more because what these kids think about is the La La Pop shop. We could add something else to these, you know, communities. So definitely, I mean, there's, there's a lot of possibilities with this.
When I was brainstorming in preparation for this meeting, joining the council, I was thinking about things that the, that the city could influence more than what, because we already have a really great relationship as a board with Paul. And so I was really thinking about how a partnership between the city departments could, should be forming a network of interlocking, you know, systems, and especially the Parks Department. So hearing you guys talk about this was exactly what I was thinking about. And I found a quote that, you know, it has been said that libraries are trusted, accessible, neutral public spaces. And I was thinking about that. Parks are the same thing, really. And currently, we do have in the parks four little free libraries where we give out books and we maintain those. We participate in the market days that the, that the parks do. And we have our own garden for events, and we can have events out there. But I would like to see more events in the other parks around town. So like I said, I was really excited. We know brought this up. There are some programs I found online. There's a Story Walk that's actually trademarked, and I have the website for it that we could do, pay for. But San Marcos also has their own program, which is called Tales on the Trails. So they made their own variation of that. So there are, there's precedents out there where they laminate books. You can't alter them. You can't make them bigger. Or, but they laminate pages of books. And as a person walks along the trail, children, it's mounted at their level. They can read the book as they go along the trail, and they change it every month or every three months, you know, depending on what we wanted to do. There's all kinds of ideas out there. So I'd really like to see a conversation between the library and the parks and see what else we can do to, to intermingle like that. And also, here at the library, we could provide programming that's park-related. However, right now, we are very constrained by our limited space that us. Hopefully, we'll talk more about that later. But I did want to say, I am, I have been invited to go to a planning meeting on March 31st that's related to the market days, starting with Juneteenth. And I, what I've talked about with other people that are going to be involved with that is that there's going to be a theme, hopefully, for each of the market days, starting with Juneteenth in June. And all of these things that you said are things that we're talking about. And so I certainly would be glad to bring library-related things to that conversation. And I've, I've told them I would be glad to participate and help them with planning all, all throughout the rest of the year. So. Anyway, thank you.
Well said.
Any other comments on the arts?
All right, moving forward, five-year plan.
So how do we, I'm so sorry. So how do we, like, come up with a plan that we can sit down and say, these are the goals that we have, and how are we going to get there?
Regarding arts?
Doing, yes. I don't know. What do I have to, what can we do?
So I have some thoughts on that, sure. So the, the council has authorized this Arts Committee to be formed and overseen by, really, the, the library board. You know, when, when Paul and I originally talked about this, there was really no better fit in the city than Paul, the library staff, library board. They had the experience, the passion, the know-how to really implement an arts program. So, you know, it's something that I think the council really wants to see. And, you know, it's tasked the board with trying to figure out what that looks like. Now, with that said, the council's not going to step back from that process either. We have been looking at potentially visiting downtown Grant Junction, which is known for arts. And what you'll see other cities do, you know, art comes in a variety of functions, right? There's, there's just, what do we say, six different, like, you know, umbrella top lights for art. And we've just discussed a few of those tonight. But a lot of cities will have like a downtown art walk or permanent installations of art, and they do some sort of festival around that. Could be paired with wine, could be a curated, you know, art show. There's a lot of ways to incorporate arts into Kyle. So I think we'll get some ideas as we look around at other communities. You would bring your ideas to, to the library board and, you know, but really specifically, we have this Arts Committee that is being kind of birthed collectively. And then to come up with a plan, any, anything that you guys see around locally or the nation that you want to put, and could do a deeper dive in, just let us know.
Are we thinking, are there any dedicated facilities or venues that are already city, other than the senior center, I guess, in, in the square? But I'm thinking, like, what are the venues you have in mind to have rotating exhibits? There's a lot of traffic down there. Is that an opportunity, either that or City Hall itself, is there an opportunity to dedicate venues? We'll be glad to curate and come up with. We'll be glad to curate and come up with ideas and creative, but we need the square footage. It can't be here, we're already packed here. But to get people who aren't coming to the library, but for. To are down there to to go out to dinner or to go run errands. What are some of the venues, especially with Laverde coming up? Are there planned venues that are going to house some of these ideas, indoors or outdoors?
Because I was I was thinking about something like that. In my opinion, it will be great for people like go to the square. If we could set some sort of display, I don't know how that would look like, that we can have art rotating, depending on the season. I just something I'm seeing comes out, it doesn't have to be exactly just like a picture of a paper. But who can help design something like that, that we can have rotations? Like this month, the park is going to celebrate this and this is the art that we are displaying. Definitely will, I think, engage more than, and if we can get the school to collaborate with this, you know. I don't know, that's a possibility, but it will be, it'll be nice.
Moving forward, we have the crew building as well. So you have the park and the crew building as well. So as we get further in the future, I don't know what our uses are, would be able to do right now. We could probably get somewhat the time right.
So, yeah, we we do an annual arts.
Yeah.
Painting display in City Hall right now, but it's a it's a short hallway, right? We partner with the school and the community. We give, we need a new venue, right? And the council's been talking for a while about a potential community center in East Kyle. And I think that's part of a later bullet point here.
That's why I didn't want to jump on there.
Right, so there's, you know, there there are topics coming up to discuss that. Outdoor display of art and a lot of communities will have like some sort of a sculpture.
Sculpture garden.
More, yes, a garden and we have great artists in Kyle already that do sculpture. But you're they're national artists as well. So if you, you know, have an annual festival and then the city through some sort of a annual fund could. Add a permanent piece into their collection each year and then mount it on the corner or in the park. Right, those are a lot of ideas that that other cities are doing. And we've got the advantage of taking the best of of each and implementing that here.
Like if you go downtown Austin, obviously it's the music capital. And if that guitars at every other corner, correct? And they have them on display. The other idea about the venues is, again, we've talked about our schools. About maybe reaching out to the individual schools themselves, Science Hall, so we have elementary. Kyle Elementary. And maybe using some of their facilities to say, hey, we want to bring out and showcase some of your students. You know, it's from the city, but we can also use it on your whole campus. So people that are there can say, hey, we're having an art exhibit for the entire city. Not just for, you know, it's just for the the school itself. But to encourage people to come out and see the arts. Yeah, to be see the kids that did that at Science Hall or Chappa Middle School. Everything around Kyle. Yeah, really.
Yeah, for some of the kids, that may be the only exposure they have to local artists because they're not coming to City Hall.
Yeah, and then they can be able to interact as well or take some of their art pieces to the other school. And then it showcases there. And then you next thing you know, you have that collaboration of all the schools working together. And then you have parents meeting each other saying, oh, I didn't know you're someone here. And that's where they they meet up and good, hey, we're going to the same high school next year or the next or junior high. And they can say, hey, let's get on board with their art department and see what they can do.
We bring what they have. Bring some programming around it as well to offer some other options around there besides art to get the the parents there, to get them, they could be engaged. Want to just go there, some of the computer members might need a little more encouraging to come out and see art. So let's get something out there that would make them want to go to that school as well.
When you think where are our kids, right? Like if they're not coming here, how can we go to them, right? I think of like ball fields, like how can like the Greg Clark or whatever it is down there, right? Like, how can we incorporate maybe some semi long term pieces there? Because that's where kids are, right? Like, if they're not coming here, right, they're they're out playing. So maybe about how we can potentially meet them where they are.
The the city council recently approved this citywide trails master plan called the vibe, right? Each vibe spot is supposed to have some central art piece, right? So we're we're trying to get development to, you know, really be part of this whole art walk or, you know, trail of art as well. So we're going to see it from the public and the private sector. But the the thing that I would hope would come out of these joint discussions in the committee is what does that look like, right? How can we direct these these developers in our program?
So if I could just make a couple of comments on that too. So as we move forward with the art commission, and I do believe that we're just on the cusp of taking those applications at this point. I mean, it's down in the final thing. So so that's going to give you a board that you can provide direction to and and funding is needed or however you want to do it. To do a lot of these things. And that having been said, as you can see, one of the library's number one goals and objectives is the arts. And we can do. Not something as big as what we could do down at the park necessarily, but if we talk about Susan, she talks about partnership, you know? That could be a library parks partnership, it could be an arts commission thing. But we do a lot of cultural programming here too, and and we will, you know, intend to continue to do that. It usually has a musical component. I think of the one we did, we had the mariachi bands here, we had the dancers here and lots of different things going on. And and the thing we lacked, I think, was the art, so displaying some art. We don't have a lot of room, but we could certainly do a little bit. But but I think to your question, that the art commission, that will be their basic job. Is to find out what the council wants and and approve those pieces and work. And and the library board and certainly the staff can can work in whatever capacity. But but on a smaller level, you know, we'll be planning these things starting tomorrow. You know, we'll be looking at some festivals.
And don't don't forget the Kyle Fair and Textravaganza, which is planned for next May, and then also Pie in the Sky. So look, other main venues to bring in people from regional and state.
Right.
And that'll be a spring festival and the marketing has really taken shape as well on how to. Put that festival together, so be excited about that, so definitely bring something back to Kyle. All right, so we're now going to, that was, anybody else on the five year plan? All right, so let's go into location of a central library.
Yeah. We were talking about this in the workshop about. Obviously, we're talking about how we. This facility area here. So I kind of after the workshop, beginning to kind of just come up with just ideas. I know not all set in stone, but just. The location that. That I kind of was maybe maybe will suggest would be more of central east of Kyle. I'm looking, I was looking at the area of the corner of Seaton Parkway and Daisy. Now, I did, I think. Probably might be owned by the hospital.
Yeah, the the south corner is owned by the hospital and the north corner is the detention pond.
So the the other idea would be, again. Looking at the Zonia, no, the Loma and Button Lane around that area. Or just somewhere in that vicinity to where it's accessible for the population that's still. It's has sidewalks. There. And I I know we're talking about the space, okay? And the idea that I had was not so much the space here, but more going up. And an idea was a five story. Library. And it would be, I just came up with the name Central Kyle Central Education Center. Or just the Kyle Education Library. You know, of course, the names change or however. But the idea that I got was I was visiting family member of times at the hospital. And if you go up to like the fourth and third floor, they have. And I went out there a couple of weeks, about a week ago. And just looked out there and just said, imagine if we had a library that was five story time. And you had, you walked in and you had your area down there on the bottom where you had your lounge area and your office. The second floor would be a dedicated children's. That would actually have like a small stage for the new. And setups. And then on the opposite side, you would have sensory rooms. To where somebody, a student or a child that has some sensory sensitivities. They can have their own little room that they can go into and be able to study or to read. Or to work on a computer laptop on that end. And then on the very top floor, again, is your information. Yeah, floor, your technology floor at the very top. And that would be where you would have your information center, kind of like what Hebrew have. The very top floor, cool. You have all your systems set up. And the whole area would be all day windows where you can see the city's skyline. Even in, you can be able to kind of look outside and just see. Because it won't be long before we'll start seeing the warm, the tropic area. And I think in in years to come, when you see have that site, you can see the entire city of Kyle. And then you have different floors and you have meeting rooms, public rooms and something like that. But on the one of the fourth floors, you would have an area where a lot of these students can go or college students or just people want to be reading. And they have their own individual rooms where they can be able to study, have a fight base and then still overlook the city and so forth. Those are just kind of the ideas and then, of course, implementing your plan as far as the arts.
One thing that does, if I could just say too, one of the big problems in library design is. People want to be able to interact and have fun and they want to come in and children want to be there. But then there's always that group of people and that's the sign of a happy, healthy library. But then there's always the people going to quiet areas, too noisy. One thing your idea does just by its design is it creates zoning. In a sense of if you have the children, for example, on the second floor, that's going to be the majority of the rooms right there. And if you have those, so that really could really lend itself to, you know. Allowing different uses on different levels and 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 much happier, much happier customers.
Yeah, so you would have that area there, designated food area. And provide whatever sound, whatever it is, you know, and setups. And like I said, you'd also have your sensory area to where if moms and and families just want to have their own little quiet area. And then you also have it in different floors, you would have, you can design it or or design it any way you want. But I thought the top floor would be cool because that's where all the cool computers would be at. And you have all of your. People are trying to look for information, research, you are, and stuff would be up on the top floor and. Your meeting rooms and also having the meeting rooms. Designs where people can. Request them. There's different times where people want to have a meeting or, hey, I want to go over and discuss my will, but I can't do it at home. I need to see where it is. Where can we, we need at the restaurant, we need an IHOP or we need a library, which you can also have those specific designated. For people to use for, but just.
I I think that's a fantastic vision. Especially as we gear our long range plan to be more of the information dissemination. Right, the center of excellence for how information gets spread to our citizens. Meeting rooms. The educational and both vocational and personal education. Whether it's learning a second language or learning how to code because I want a better job. Those that area that you're describing to me sounds like a place where you'll get a nexus of people who want to go. Learn that second language or maybe they're in a small class that's that the library has facilitated. The instructor to come in and teach. You know, a maker space, you know, who wants to learn how to run a CNC router? Show up on Wednesdays at seven P M. That's the sort of of envision where I see people aren't just going to check out books, they're going there to get information. And that, you know, to to your point, that sounds like a great place to get a nexus of people. And that's really exciting.
Four in meeting room A, we're going to be discussing this. And if they're also going to be doing any kind of public forums where there's an election. That could be up there as well. And you can also bring the families where they can go downstairs and have kids go down there and read books. Then mom and dad can send a meeting and then the other kids can go upstairs.
I think that's how.
Idea was also when the design concept is to have a court. To where you can have people who come out if they want to do outdoor. And they can have a little area set up where they can just have a little area with a fountain, whatever, and just be reading or just have a surgery.
Another thing you could do, the Denver Public Library did this many years ago, is they had one level of the library that. Was very old historical material that they gathered that you could check out, but you could go and sit down and look at it. You could also have a section like that on Texas history and curate some things to come out. That would be fantastic.
The reading room to work back for Kyle, for the his Kyle.
Well, we do have a heritage, but it's small.
Well, it's only small. Yeah, we're ready to go, just right as.
She's the cow boater.
Ready.
A possible inside of the location. What would actually go in there and how would we design?
That's exciting.
I also have some notes on this. I I am very excited by what you said and I was taking this with the next question, if I can do both, which is, I I guess you can say what libraries you. You wouldn't base it on, but I my vision for the library personally is that it be a hub of the community with enough room for the effective work of the staff. That's definitely an issue here with a very little room was given to the staff. So that was one thing that that we definitely need to make sure that we have in the future. But also library programs, community events, research, testing, studying, quiet reading, teen groups and children. And I love that you brought in the sensory room, that that's just tremendous. And and I was wondering, were you talking about an entirely new building or, you know, a branch? And so I would love to see a huge building, you know, with for dreaming, that's that's what I would love. A branch is harder to manage, but you know, whatever we can do, we will take, but.
Fifteen, I think, how you vision things ten, ten years down the road. You know, you know, our space will start getting limited. So the idea that if the time comes to where we start looking at it, so it's the same. How feasible and, of course, the cost of everything, but to start looking, maybe start looking at different options.
Yes, so I I think we definitely should have a library more centralized where all the citizens of Kyle can reach it in ten or fifteen minutes. Where those the lower socioeconomic status can afford to reach it, you know. And certainly we have Kyle three fourteen, but I, you know, I'm just saying. And I thought definitely east side of Kyle and north of one fifty. And I was wondering if there was land available off Button Creek Drive or Go Forth or Dacey Lane or Beebe Road. I I went and drove out there looking around, but that's that's the quadrant where you're where you're talking about. So I was very excited to see you that. I our library now is twenty thousand square feet and most, everybody knows it's it's too small. And I did want to say you can go online to the Texas State Library site and see statistics for libraries across the state. And you can actually sort. The statistics and they have it from the fiscal year twenty twenty, but you can sort it by multiple things. But I sorted it by the area, the population served. And then you can compare multiple things. You can compare the square footage of the buildings, the collection size, how many cardholders they have, the annual visits, the number of staff, the salaries, the overall budget. And you can see how our library is suffering in a lot of ways. So I am hopeful, I'm super excited by what you said, that I'm hopeful that the city will be able to. Someday fund the library more fully and and give us a better facility. Did did you guys have in mind a library, have you visited libraries and looked at?
I've had a ring research on, there's one in North Carolina University. Oh, there's that one and I constantly remember going to the downtown library in Austin.
Yes. Yes.
That one was like this. So I, I just kind of remember though that library there.
So I, I went down to San Marcos, um, and, cause I hadn't seen their new facility. Cause they recently doubled, basically doubled from 27 square, 27,000 square feet. They added another 28,000 square feet. And I will say the library director in San Marcos is wonderful. And she said she would love to have the council come and tour her library. And she will show you all the behind the scenes she did for me. Their workspace is gorgeous. They have great, uh, rooms around the sides. I love their children's area. Um, but they are sideways, you know, spread out of her land. So she suggested to me that, um, we talked to, um, New Braunfels if we're interested in a branch, cause they're, they've, they've decided on a separate branch. So if the city decides to go that way or wants to see how that works, she suggested we talk to New Braunfels. I haven't done that. But Segin, she, I, I brought a flyer that I have, but pictures do not do it justice. I want everybody to go to Segin and see their library and I'll pass this around, but it really does not do it justice. It is like a giant treehouse. It's two stories. Uh, it's along their creek and trail and I, I would love to have this for Kyle. They used the reclaimed wood from the trees that had to be removed for the building inside the library. And it is so open, um, it even above the second floor. I was thinking, even if we only had to have one floor, I would want to have with the way they did the second floor with the raised ceiling with the windows. But you feel like you're in a treehouse and it does have the individual rooms around the edges like San Marcos did. I love San Marcos so much, so I recommend you go it first. Because then once you see Segin, it is even so much better. It was just so tremendous. Except for maybe the children's area. I really liked the children's area in San Marcos. Yes. Yes. So, um, it, it was really nice. And if we could somehow have it along a trail, that would be even better. When I was visiting, um, there was a, a mother with her child having a picnic out there on the grass, right off the side of the trail between the library and the trail. And, um, they even told me when it rains, the employees there work on the second floor. Said they love to be there when it rains and you don't normally hear that, but they said it is just so gorgeous in there. Um, and so, yeah, if I had a vision, Segin really caught my eye.
Well, it's also connectivity. So now you have the vibe trail. So for keeping people off the road, they can walk there, they can hike there, they can take their golf cart there on the vibe trail. So that helps the, even with our parking issues about the city, uh, a golf cart takes less than a regular vehicle. But you know, when you're looking at programming and what we're trying to do as a city, we're trying to incorporate things around our vibe trails. So having that a destination place during our trail system is, is probably a win for us and would probably bring out more people as well. So.
Oh, and they are LEED gold certified. Um, and I know some, some people are very concerned about that.
That's amazing. It's amazing. Thank you for bringing that to us. It's great to see.
If we wanted to take a group trip.
Citizens 25, you know, 35 miles down the road, get that experience.
And, and their population is so much larger.
For Kyle.
And it's theirs. It's their library.
Yeah. They did. We, we've got a plan, but they, they did it. And.
Any kind of research that needs to be done, anyone to go back and study upon experience. Near the hospital.
They have a heritage, the heritage room in San Marcos is very nice too.
So I guess the biggest thing is identifying a spot. I, I don't think so. Kind of, uh, has identified something already and, and then thinking about what we're going to build, I guess is the next key. And that's more, you can help as well. You know, you had some great comments today. I took plenty of notes. So definitely continue to bring those comments with us, email to us, any ideas that you get are great. Send them to Scott and Scott will send them to us and then we can get that out as well. But, um, uh, anybody else have any other comments on this?
Jesse looks right over at me. Um, I have tons of comments. Where to begin? Uh, let's talk about the library. So real quick, the reason why me and Scott were laughing, apologizing for being rude, but, uh, y'all probably noticed the design team is the same design team that did our public safety center, PGA L. Um, so that's what we were.
So do you libraries?
Over there, they're, uh, designers of all buildings. So yeah, I'm sure they'll design anything. Um, certainly take your money. But so the, the thing that stands out to me, and I, I don't want to be the, uh, the stubborn bull here, but I gotta think practicality here. So looking at that building, uh, the thing that immediately steps out to me, uh, and of course it's gorgeous. You know, there are some gorgeous libraries around here. I didn't know Segin was quite that way. So thank you for sharing that with us, Susan. Uh, the Austin new library with the green roof is amazing. There's all kinds of ones we saw, a great one in Frisco. The thing is, so that building is 43,000 square feet and it said 14.8 million in 2013. You can double that. Yeah. Uh, it's going forward now. The other thing, let's think about practically how that would happen. So you made a comment about write a check. Won't necessarily be us writing the check. That'll be the voters that are deciding to do that. And so we've got to think about where that comes in. So, um, you all might know that, uh, we have engaged with lobbyists. Uh, we have federal and state lobbyists that we've been engaged with. And one of the things I want to bring us back to is this wonderful five year plan. I feel like we brushed through it way too quick. There's some things I want to highlight and go back to on this. Um, but so what we're going to need to do is we're going to have to approve money in a budget year. This is going to be the same process with public safety center. Approving money for, in a budget year for a facility. Location, you talked about location being one of the main things. It certainly is one of the things. We save about $800,000 on land, uh, at the public safety center because we didn't have to buy that land. They was giving it to us through the Mo Mark development over there through that TERS. We don't have that luxury unless we put pop the turds over there on the east side. Uh, so that's going to be a cost we're going to have just soon. So certainly, and I, you know, customer to be has brought up the, the area that he spoke about earlier at the, the visionary workshop in Frisco. Certainly I, in an ideal world, that would be great, but we probably are going to pay an arm and a leg to get that land. Um, probably not. I'm not trying to be pessimistic, but not probably going to happen in that area with a price point that we could probably swallow. The only land that the city currently earned owns on the east side of Kyle is where Vista Park was going to go. So when you all have been around a while, y'all might've heard of Vista Park. That's where the city's recreation center was going to go. Right by Chappa Middle School for reference, uh, that big vacant land over there by Daisy. And that was shelved because the price, they paid all the money for these plans. Uh, shoot 12 years ago, Jerry probably know better. Uh, yeah, probably longer than that. And then they sat on the shelf and nothing got built. That is one of the biggest fears I have in this job. Is paying most likely millions of dollars for plans. Because it's typically a percentage of the construction cost of what those plans go for. Spending millions of dollars for it to not come to fruition. So we try to do projects as a council with something with the, the way to get to the end in mind. Not just the design, but all the way to construction. We're currently trying to figure out that problem with the, the senior center. Uh, obviously the rec center has always been a thing. We figured it out with the public safety center, but we had some huge help with the TERS and getting the land in, in that area. Um, so there are a lot of challenges bringing this forward and I'm not trying to be, you know, bring everybody down, but this i- it is, it is going to take a number of different efforts. Finding the land is just one of the challenges. So going back to you all's, uh, strategic plan, I'm going to kind of talk about a number of different things here. Uh, you all in your bullet, in your fourth point, you talked about exploring grant opportunities, obtaining additional technology assets to benefit. So that's a very broad thing. Uh, technology assets can be computers. It could be, technology can be in a building, the cars we drive are a technology, you know? So there's all types of things like that. So I was excited. You know, obviously y'all know that I've, I've seen this and you know, I hope the council goes through this, uh, five year plan. With a fine tooth comb, because there's a lot of great information in here. And major kudos to you all to get 700, 726 respondents to their survey. You all are the reason why I challenged the city to get a thousand respondents to our survey and it's currently out right now. Because of what you all did with this survey. And, um, I'm, we have until April 4th. Uh, something like that. We need Joel's help and we probably should have been saying this at every board meeting, uh, that we've had joint. We're trying to get at least a thousand respondents to that survey. So if you all could help us with, and isn't it remarkable? They had as many survey respondents as we get as the city, using all of our tools, all of our resources, all of the social media power we have. Using elected officials in our arms to twist people to do a survey. You all did that without any of that. That's impressive. Yeah, you go ahead. Yeah. Well, there's no reason why we can't achieve that same success in our city, uh, survey is my point. And so what I'd really like from you all, cause we're going to take a trip here, uh, next month. To visit with our lobbyists, kind of hold their feet to the fire and see what they're doing. At least that's what I'm going to be expecting to do. But one of the things as well is bringing to them ideas on what we would like them to find grants for, for this city. Uh, we know that, uh, certainly when it comes to construction, building things, we need construction ready documents to qualify for, for grants. So that's a major investment to get there. Um, so once again, that takes the council, uh, to be able to put that in there. But once again, with a longer plan in mind of really not only just that step, but how do we get it past the next few steps? Um, so that is going to be the challenge to not just this, it's not this council's challenge this year. It's going to be the council's challenge over the next five years to figure this out. Um, I want to make it happen. I think the council clearly wants to make it happen. I think we're all on board on that. But we've got to figure out when we're going to bring this bond, because ultimately that's what's going to pay for this. There's not going to be any other way to pay for this. And I, I was curious of how they paid for this bond. But was it a certificate obligation bond where they just allocated, they just issued the debt by the council unanimously? Or did they go to GO where they asked the voters for money? So that's the other thing is we got to make that decision on where we want to go with that. Um, I'm probably can assume that we're probably going to go to GO because that was something we probably want to ask the voters to do. Um, you all might know that we have a big bond coming up this November, the road bond. Which is by far the thing that citizens are most interested in. And it's going to probably be well over a million dollars, a hundred million dollars, uh, for that bond on several different roads throughout our city. So doing anything with a library is, as you all can kind of tell, not going to happen this year. But we've got a whole big focus on trying to bring this road bond. However, uh, you know, I think there are some opportunities within this budget. We could probably get some low hanging fruit and, and, and start some balls rolling. Till maybe in the next couple of years, we get to that point after we figure out how we're going to find all the way to construction there. Um, I feel like you're burning to jump in. So I just want to make, and I know I briefly told you all that in a meeting that I was at, try to temper that expectation. Cause I knew when we had our joint meeting, we're probably going to say that. Uh, but that's where really, we really need to figure that out. And where I would really like to get back from you all before April 6th ideally. Um, is anything that you all can see where those great opportunities are. Uh, that we can go and ask when we go up to DC next month. So that would be a huge lift from you all. Once again, probably should have been asked of all the boards and commissions that we met with. But that would be really great. If, I know, I don't know if you all will meet again between then. But if there's some way you all can kind of put your minds together and, uh, deliver something to the council, I think that would be great.
What was the grant that Buda just got? Was it a mental health grant? It was just in the haze. Was it, uh, was for mental health, right? So we know that, you know, area of communities are seeking and winning.
Absolutely. We're going to have to implore things like that. Maybe it's the LED, maybe it's other things like this. Because just generally speaking, will there be a grant out there just to help a community to build a, a, a library? No, it's going to have to be something that's certainly unique. Certainly, uh, hits at communities that are underserved, certainly doing all kinds of different things than just a, what we traditionally think of a library.
I'm. And objectives, because you're going to see technology going to the objectives. You're going to see vocational training goals and we wrote this LRP to be grant friendly. So where you see a match, please advocate for us.
And yeah, I, I plan to take this documentary to, to the lobbyists personally. But, uh, if there's anything specifically, because I know there will be questions for more specifics here. Uh, and they'll of course look for anything related to this, but if there is anything specific, I think we, we should, we gotta, we have to ask for it and try to put that out there. Um, those are my initial comments on the building. Um, once again, I didn't mean to be a, a damper on the spirits, but that is. I've been doing this for a while. I built a $37 million building. Uh, and saw what challenges that was, and we did that in lightning speed, uh, in four years. With focus going for that. So just kind of setting the expectation of what that looks like.
All, all I can say is if you, if we plan for nothing, that is what we will achieve.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if you heard from me that I said I'm planning for nothing.
I, I understand. Here's the old guy.
Here, here's the old guy in the room talking now is, uh, five years is nothing. I mean, it's, it's quick. So actually if we start planning now, start working and coming up with an objective here in a year or two. And then go with the planning space from there, five years is, is a drop in the bucket. And I, I can tell you that by experience, because I, I've been in this job now three years and it, it felt like it was yesterday I was elected. But, uh, definitely it, uh, it's, I think, starting now, just, you know, having conversations is, is, is the start right now. And I think that's, uh, what, uh, that's what I was alluding to, but yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think we're in the right, we're in the right position now to start these conversations.
As a citizen, I would be on cloud nine and five years from now I'm walking into the wonderful library.
But I think the wonderful library for me would have to encompass being very technology driven. Because Austin is now a tech hub and Kyle has pretty much merged in with Austin. I've noticed a lot of things that happened with the city of Austin kind of flows down to be in Kyle. And we kind of, in a lot of ways mirror that. So there's a lot of people. You can't really build that much out of Austin. So a lot of people coming here for tech are coming into Buda. And Kyle, and I think if we focus to get a better library, it really needs to be a tech library. And I think if we kind of outdo Austin as far as being a tech library, we could also, um, not just get grants, but we can look at the tech companies coming in. They're going to help us keep our workforce to where we need them to be, to help us grow as a company. And so I think we'll see a lot more, um, private fundings from bigger companies.
So collaboration with the new companies that are coming in.
If you. To partner with all the corporations.
And so. Coming in, reaching out to them. In, in those systems where if they've got any kind of investment that they want to give back to the city. This is what our plan is. We would like to have, try to get a new modern library, education center, informational center for our residents. Is there anything that you can do to, to help feed into that? To where it also goes out to high schools that are around in the schools and give them. Like you've got some in other cities that we have that we went to recently. They really boost their, uh, athletic programs. Okay. Provide on large stadiums. This could be something totally different to where we can actually include the companies that are moving in. Even the Tyson's, they, well, they're here, you could say we want to be able to build this library. But we also want to be able to utilize the children that are using it to where they can eventually do those work for you.
Yes. Right. So what they did in Laramie is, um, they came in and they built a huge maker space technology center. Because those students are future employees. And they took some of these areas where technology was basically unheard of. Because those students are future employees, and they took some of these areas where technology was basically unheard of. And that was pretty successful. So with Kyle and with people graduating. We've already got Google here. We've already got Indeed. We've got a lot of companies that are building offices out of Dublin, out of a lot of other areas besides San Francisco. And there's a lot of startups. So this would be a really unique opportunity to make a grab and say, we can train, we could provide these services, we just need the space.
And that's in our number four. If you'll read it, if you look at bullet point number four, provide or partner with local technology organizations to provide. Programming aerospace robotics, artificial intelligence, and then the third bullet is explore grant opportunities. So it's, it's all in there, and I am looking forward to y'all's feedback on it for sure, because we thought through this for literally like a year almost, so.
You utilize people that are here. Councilor Del's the same, you know, he does take funding. Okay, it would have to go to a. A G O bond or to the residents. But if there's companies that are here or coming here, and we can reach out to and say. You know, would you like to have a sponsorship with the library? Has a lean dedicated to your area or a section dedicated to your area? What would be the price tag for that? Or just help us build that? I think a lot of these companies would probably jump on that.
Especially if we.
Funded.
If we focus on four versus some of the other things, because that's where Austin has become. While we still have South by Southwest, it's, it pales in comparison to the tech that's coming into the city.
Surrounding areas.
But I might also add, you know, we haven't talked about ACC at all, but they are a pretty big player in the tech side especially, but. We have thousands of students and thousands more on their way as they continue to run their campus. Just this last year, they did a big comprehensive planning effort on their behalf for all their campuses. And so for the Haze Campus, they have. Really refined their future to the following. Supply chain management, medical coding, medical assistance, C and A. Business management, real estate, I T, financial technology, and skilled construction trades programs. And then their other goal is to establish a comprehensive early college high school with local I S D partners at the Haze Campus. So they're trying to bring some of these accelerator, in fact, they call it the ACC accelerator, accelerator. Perfect. All right. So they're trying to bring that here to the Haze Campus. So there's probably some synergy there if, I don't know if that's included in your plan, maybe. But if not, you know, that I think we can work with them, and there may be some funding for. This maker space idea.
It's kind of hidden under fourth.
We didn't have one.
We had to use general language, but yeah.
It was on the like, it was on the dry erase board. I point here because it was literally right.
I I'm hoping we can use some of their meeting space.
We're talking about schools. What could the participation look like from the Haze School District as we're moving forward on some of this? Could they participate in a library like this that would benefit all the school district?
You know, what's interesting is Paul and I had this conversation four or five years ago, I want to say. And said, how can we really bring the high school in and utilize them for these types of programs? So we did with me with with the I S D. And for a summer, we had a joint east branch at Lehman High School. And during that summer, they, you know, we actually staffed their school library and tried to have, you know, some sort of small programming was just trying to be an east branch, but. The conversation at the time was less about how do we. You know, co-fund space, but how do we utilize existing space at the high school? And I think that's still probably on the table, but Paul could probably tell you, you know, how that program really functioned behind the scenes. We abandoned it after one year because it really. Didn't get the the usage that we wanted. I mean, that was really the thing. We had staff there. We really promoted it, but I didn't find what what we hoped to.
And I'm thinking of centralized building that, you know, would benefit not only the community but also the school district. How do we get them to partner, maybe even help, you know, find a location like this? So I think that's a conversation we need to be talking to because, you know, we were just thinking about the city and the citizens who are paying for it, but we've got, you know, a key member there that. Has some funding as well, and I don't know what their plans were, you know, a library or, you know, just those small ones within their schools, or are they looking to branch out? Have a conversation with them.
From the education, looking at, I saw a little segment on the C-SPAN that. Eventually, in time, we will hopefully. Get a grasp on this coming. And the, and kids and teachers in every schools will be going back into the classroom eventually. But if it doesn't, and virtual learning is going to be still a standard now. Being able to look ten years down the road to having a facility in your city that could be able to assist with that as well. As we, you know, and so with a new facility, like you're saying, really focus a lot on the technology. The Wi-Fi and everything else and everything he's looking at. That's gonna be the next round of children that kids are gonna be already that since they were like in second grade. Already knowing how to do virtual learning. Now they're in high school. It's gonna be just, you know, second nature to them. So we're looking at how we can accommodate those kind of, that kind of growth. And that kind of usage as well.
I think it's a great way to get students used to that because I'm working on my PhD and it's all remote. ACC offers all remote. You could do a technical writing program all remote. So with even the community college all the way up to the doctorate level, you could do your entire program remote. And so if we start incorporating that in the secondary school, students are already ready.
So you're incorporating those ideas to possible companies that are coming. And you can throw that happen is like, hey, look, this is why we're coming to you to see if you'd like to partner up with us financially or funding of the grants.
I I wanted to tell Councilmember Allison, I did remember when you spoke to us about how difficult it would be in terms of cost. But I was excited to start the conversation, and I think it's good to dream big and. Councilmember Tuvia's brought up, even I was excited by the two-story building, wasn't even sure we'd do that, and he said five stories, and I just think that's lovely. It's it's good to dream big and start from there and then see what we really can do. And I had looked into the whole grant thing, and I can share some information that I have at home, but. I would like to see the city have even just a one-person grant department that maybe the individual departments write their grants, but somebody who could manage them and help find them and. And, you know, something like that. I, it's something that I've been kind of wondering about why we outsource, but that's just my personal opinion. But and on the survey, I tell you, get out and walk the streets. I went to garage sales and handed out a Q R code. And I talked to people on the street. I went to the coffee shops and, you know, that sort of thing. So not just your friends, not just social media. But getting out and talking to total strangers, and I, and people seem to really respond to that. And I will definitely say, I understand the road bond. When I went out and looked at the land to try to see where could we have a library, right? Because this, you know, looking on the satellite map wouldn't enough. I wanted to drive out. We were going over the roads. It was like, oh, and now I know why these people are complaining about roads. My street might be fine, but certainly I saw the need for the roads. So, yeah, I just wanted to address some of those things.
Actually, speaking about grants, the Grant Library is in downtown Austin. I'm wondering if there was something that we could branch out here in Kyle as well. Because if I wanted to write a grant for somebody, I would need to know how to use that library. I would have set up an appointment. I would get trained on it. And then it's a great resource to write grants. So maybe add what they offer to the Kyle Library. Because that's, as far as I know, Austin is the only one that has one for grant writers, and then that's it.
Having that room, those extra rooms there. Throughout there as far as the concept would be able to where people can be able to have that there. Go in and have the service to be able to do the taxes and have somebody there, have somebody to do grant writing or something like that. And have the, have the space available for anybody to use that. That's one thing that I know. Especially Y B and P T A mom, cheer mom, fam mom, and everything else, athletic mom. They try to get together and have these meetings, and girls got moms and all that, and there's really no place. And so it's just utilizing small groups like that and then using another space later on for people to. Do some of their information that the city can provide. And that could, again, come across to where if we were able to reach out to new companies that come in and say, this section was donated by whatever company. Whatever bank money they gave from their company.
Yeah, I I can tell you the meeting spaces in high demand here, and it's, it's very difficult, right, Paul? It's, they're having to turn people away, and I was, I looked online trying to find a place, and I was wondering, ACC, I was like, City Hall, do you have to pay for the rooms there? I couldn't find any place with free spaces other than the library, which is just too sad.
Same thing too. So if businesses want to have meetings, they don't have those spaces either as well. As as we're planning a building, I want you to keep in mind as well that it's not always thinking big. It's thinking how big we're gonna get.
Right.
Right now, we're sixty thousand residents.
So, yeah, we have to think bigger than than now, right?
Councilor, he is thinking maybe five stories. It's not because, well, this would be great, is what is gonna be our goal.
I'm completely on board with that.
Five years will be.
Ten, fifteen years down the road.
But I know, I know, we've got to get, have the average citizen be on board with that, so.
People now see that, you know, this is where we're gonna be at.
So we have to start the conversation.
The other comments?
Well, just on that, you know. There are a certain amount of, we'll call them grants, state, federal, for which cities are typically the recipients of. I think from a brick and mortar standpoint for a library, particular, these are more foundational grants. And so back to your point. I would say maybe let's look into offering Foundation Search, you know, or some sort of other large-scale grant writing. Program to what the library offers here. And then, I mean, anyone in the community can have access to that database, which is just a full listing of. Every private foundational grant there is out there, and then you can sort through that by brick and mortar topics, libraries. So. Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, for example, is a great one to, you know, for library construction, but there are others directly for libraries. So it does, it cuts all the work, you know, in in a fraction, but something like Foundation Search would be great.
David Silverman at ACC, he does, he kind of runs their nonprofit that they do there. But he also, or they also offer a grant writing class, but it's a certificate class, and maybe somebody could reach out to David Silverman.
That would be great. Yeah, it's like you do, you know, you have score trainings here, right? You know, there are organizations that just focus on grant writing. I'm sure they would be happy to come here and teach a class.
I could send you all the information.
I'm gonna turn that back on you once you guys talk about it, and you've got my blessing to implement it here at the library.
Any more comments? See, and I think we're done. So that being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second, we got a second by Councilor Tuvia's. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, we adjourn. I just want to say thank y'all for being here. Thank y'all for being here today. Thank you for your input and your comments. I really appreciate it. Thank you for your time as well. And thank you for all that you do for the.
Same to you. Thank you.
Thank you for the candor. Appreciate it. It's always good to have transparency, even if Dex takes the wind out of my sails.
Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn too, so I'll.
Some of.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we adjourned. Thank y'all so much for being here, too. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.